We call a meeting in order. And thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. And we have a pretty full agenda, so we're going to get right into it. And as Scott had mentioned, just a reminder that the meeting is being recorded. It will appear on YouTube several days after the meeting's over. First item on the agenda is the accepting the minutes of the August 10th, 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting. Can I get a motion to accept the meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second that.
Is there any comments or questions?
August 20, or sorry, August 10th, 2020.
And if you have any questions, just either unmute yourself and speak, or type into the text box that you are, you want to say something. But if there's no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Next to the reports, first up is the police chief.
Good evening. For the month of August, the Police Department officers documented 1,109 incidents in the Police Department Call Recording System. I was able to identify 667 of those entries as incidents wherein someone was specifically requesting the services of the Police Department. During the month, the officers issued 161 traffic citations. They investigated 28 traffic crashes and they arrested 18 individuals. Additionally, for the month of August, the department members conducted three motor carrier details at the weigh station, resulting in 757 trucks being weighed, three of which were found to be overweight. Eight federal motor carrier inspections were also performed during those details. Year-to-date totals, the officers have weighed 3,959 trucks. That's about half of where we were this time last year due to the health crisis. We opened those weigh station details back up again, and we've been pretty successful with being able to keep everybody safe doing that. So far, the officers have identified 32 trucks as being overweight. They've conducted 63 inspections while on the details, and additional six inspections while on their daily activities. They have found 17 of those trucks to need to be placed out of service, one additionally while they were on their regular detail duties. And they've placed six drivers out of service during the details, and one driver out of service during their regular duties. So far, year-to-date, the officers have issued 829 traffic citations. They've issued 185 written warnings. They've arrested 103 individuals, and they've answered 8,791 calls for service. Year-to-date, the officers have investigated 185 traffic crashes, again, which is considerably down due to the lack of traffic that we had at the beginning of the health crisis. And lastly, year-to-date, the officers have administered Narcan on four different occasions.
Thank you. Next, the treasurer.
Yes, through the month of August in the general fund, we have collected a little bit over 71% of our budgeted revenues and have spent just under 62% of our budgeted expenditures.
Thank you. And public works.
Great, for the month of August, the daily average flow to the downtown treatment plant was approximately 1.29 million gallons per day. And there were no new sewer connections to either the Eagleview Treatment Plant or Dara. As far as rainfall for the month, we did have another active month, especially with the tropical system that moved up earlier. We received 11.07 inches of rain for the month of August, the normal being 3.9, so again, significantly above average. And I think at this point, we're about 14.5 inches for the year above average. The department responded to 148 PA1 calls, as well as completed daily station checks and their meter checks and sewer meter checks, as well as right-of-way mowing. The Public Works Department was active in the Williamsburg Boulevard area, repairing some damaged asphalt in the area. And I also just wanted to mention, too, we are still working on the Norwood Road culvert, so that road is still closed at this time. There is a detour posted for traffic to flow. We're still trying to get a better idea of just how long that project's going to take. But that's it for now.
Thank you. Fire marshal report?
Yes, for the month, the Building Department continues to issue building permits and inspect those projects that are under construction. And also had 37 fire responses for the month.
Thank you. And the Lyndale Fire Company?
Yes, Fire Company responded to 77 alarms for the month of August. Of those 77, 41 were in Euclid, 15 in Upper Euclid, nine in West Pikeville, and 12 in other towns.
Thank you. And finally, the Euclid ambulance. We have a representative from the ambulance. Okay, it doesn't look like it. All right, then can I get a motion to accept the reports?
I move that we accept the reports as presented.
Amy, are you muted?
Sorry, hold a second.
All right, so a motion to accept the reports. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving to the heart of Euclid update from Tony Gorkin, who's a member of the Environmental Advisory Council.
Thanks for letting me be on the agenda. I'm assuming you can hear me, I unmuted?
Yes.
The Heart of Euclid project is a project that started last year to introduce native plants to the Euclid Township grounds, create a place for a nature walk within the heart of Euclid, and to provide examples and education for the public on environmentally sustainable and more ecologically sound gardening and management practices. We had a very, very successful summer. Visitors to the grounds of the Euclid Township building were treated to a successful milkweed garden with blossoming milkweed plants. We had monarch butterfly caterpillars and lots of other butterflies visiting. We had several comments on the increase in the butterflies and so forth in the area. And we need to thank several volunteers who kept the plants watered during the hot, dry parts of the summer. Now that autumn's on us, we're planning to renew the garden in the spring, and we will be collecting seeds from the plants that are there now. We're planning to try and repeat the workshop that we gave last fall on how the best way to sow milkweed seeds for plants, because we got a lot of interest this year. People saw the garden and they wanted to know how to grow their own, which is exactly why it's an example to the community of what they can do in their own gardens. We're a little challenged by the COVID restrictions and looking at some kind of media-based way to repeat that workshop, having quite decided. But anybody who's interested should watch the EAC page and see for announcements on how we're going to do that. I know we've had a lot of inquiries about it. In the meantime, there's a handout among several that have been placed on the EAC page of the township's website. There's one on there from last year's workshop about how to plant the milkweed seeds. There's also a handout about the milkweed garden, talking about what kind of plants to plant for supporting pollinators and increasing your biodiversity, again, to educate the public on how they can do better in terms of ecologically sound gardening. The other major area that we had, we did a riparian border along the stream below the Lowest Pond. A riparian border is putting in plants that will support, that will handle the dampness, the wetness of the ground, and help manage flooding, reduce the erosion to the stream, and otherwise increase the biodiversity and generally manage that area. So we planted a garden, and it grew very well. Again, we plan to expand that more along the stream in the coming year and to repeat some of the things that we did last fall and winter, again, as examples to the public for things they can do in their own similar environments. Another project that we have been working on is to try and set up a trail through the grounds of nature learning stations. There's an amazing amount to see once you start wandering around down there, and the opportunity for children, schoolchildren, families, and whatever, to do nature observations and explore. We created a, we have created a map that we'd like to distribute, and then also we have a handbook that gives several pages of information about each station, that tells nature facts about the area and suggests environment learnings. We also have started to place some markings that we have made out of tree slices to identify those areas. It's, again, it's a little challenging with COVID to invite the public and welcome them to use these facilities. I think that's probably going to have to be held off until next spring or whatever, but we are prepared and maybe there's some, we hope for maybe to discuss in the EAC some opportunities to promote remote learning opportunities for families who are dealing with the remote education. So that's the project we've been exploring plans for next year. If you'd like to get involved, we do have some volunteers. We're working very carefully to observe COVID restrictions, safe distancing masks and all of that. And it's, again, kind of hard to bring people in to become involved, but we hope that we've stimulated your interest. And if you are interested, contact the EAC using the Contact EAC link on the website. And again, I'd like to repeat, there are numerous plant lists and other information that we've posted to the EAC page. We've had a lot of questions about that the whole process has aroused, like, well, I'd like to do a garden like that, what do I plant, and so forth. And so we're putting information and education materials out there for the public. Thank you.
No, thank you. We've been back there, it's very nice and some interesting work you're doing. So, thank you very much. With, Amy or Kim, do you have any other comments?
I just want to say that I've personally enjoyed it, and I recommend anyone who hasn't visited the township property recently, come by and check it out. There's just a lot of new stuff going on and great ways that residents can copy what Tony is doing there and the EAC, so that we can increase our biodiversity and support pollinators.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to the MS4 Pollution Reduction Plan, presented by Dan Daly.
Good evening, everybody. I am Dan Daly with Edward B. Walsh from Associates. We are the township engineer for the township. And I think Scott Greenlee is going to put up a map here for me. Perfect. So I'm here tonight just to give you a brief update and overview of our MS4 program and what we're doing with our recently submitted pollution reduction or soon-to-be-submitted pollution reduction plan. So it was a real quick background here. The township has a MS4 permit, which is a municipal separate stormwater system, MN4S's program here, permit from DEP for us to manage our stormwater. All the local municipalities within the region have this, if you're meets some criteria. And as part of this program, it's been going on since 2003, I believe. And as part of this program here, some newer regulations that have come out has, have, is requiring us to implement some stormwater management improvements to help improve water quality. So the map that you see on the screen there is a map of Euclid Township. The orange border is our township, township border. And we have color-coded the three watersheds within Euclid Township, colored kind of that purplish-blue color, which is areas where you have to do a pollution reduction plan. So I actually was back in front of the board in 2017 with this similar presentation. We had made an application to DEP for pollution reduction plan. They have kind of modified some regulations or rules and associated with it, and did a review of our plan and provided some additional guidance. We are now in the process to re-update that pollution reduction plan. And in short, what this is going to have us do here is for those three watersheds, which is the unnamed tributary to the east branch of the Brandywine Creek in the far left-hand side of that plan. You have the center area, which is the Shemona Creek watershed, and then you have the West Valley Creek watershed, which is also known as Lyndale Run. And that's the creek that runs down by the Marshwood Shopping Center. So we are required in those watersheds to implement improvements over a five-year period that will help reduce the pollutants within this, within the stream. So DEP is requiring the township to implement improvements in the field that helps solve the problem. So what the EAC has been doing is going to, is going to benefit the township here, too, to achieve the goal, the ultimate goal of this program is to, is to get our watersheds to be meeting water quality standards. Right now, the watersheds in most of Chester County are impaired for one pollutant or another. A significant part of it is sedimentation, siltation. And so the goal is to, with this program, is to improve the water quality within, within the watershed. So as part of this pollution reduction plan, we are proposing that over a five-year period to implement various stormwater management projects that help improve water quality. And some of them are going to be stream bank stabilization projects. Some of them are going to be retrofits of existing basins. So either basins that are owned by the township or potentially owned by homeowners association. The township is going to look over the next five-year period to potentially retrofit some facilities to improve those facilities functioning so that they can reduce the amount of pollutants that are leaving them. A lot of Euclid Township was developed in the, in the 70s and 80s and the 90s before all the current stormwater management regulation control factors were put into place. And there are some improvements that can be done to various stormwater management facilities that can help have them operate, operate in a better, better, operate more efficiently. So we are basically going to work on trying to improve water quality. As far as this pollution reduction plan, we are, part of this presentation is to update the public on what's going on, but it's also regulatory requirement that the public has an opportunity to review this plan and to make public comment on it. So the township has done an advertisement in the Daily Local, advertising this until October 14th, 2020. The pollution reduction plan can be viewed on the township's website. And I also believe we have a hard copy located in the lobby. I believe the township is, is still officially closed, but the people can enter the lobby area and view that pollution reduction plan or view it on the township website and submit written comments to the, to the township on any concerns or issues or, or support of the, of the pollution reduction plan that we have, we have prepared at this point. The plan does show various stormwater management facilities and stream bank stabilizations. It, it doesn't have details of what we're going to do to those facilities. This is, the plan is a kind of overview of the, of the, of some options for us to go ahead and do. And over the next five-year period, we're going to look at each one of those. And some of those facilities may not be feasible to do retrofits or stream bank stabilization projects on because of some other constraint or environmental constraint or some other issue associated with it. So this is just kind of an overview that, hey, we, if we have options to go ahead and look at to make these improvements as, as we need to. So, so right now, that's kind of where we're at with it. After the October 14th date for the end of the public comment period, we will make, make submission to DEP. DEP will review and approve this, and they have a lot of municipalities to look at. So we're hoping, hoping maybe by the end of this year, the beginning of next year, we can have our blessing. And then we have, we'll spend the next year or two after that working on some planning documents and looking at our options. And then I would anticipate in maybe year three, four, or five to start implementing some, some of these improvement programs to, to, to help improve the water quality. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. I don't know if the board and/or the public, you guys want to handle that for any comments that they, people may have at this time?
And I'll just add, I know you said it, that this plan is on our website. But if you go to Euclid.com and go to the featured links, there's a stormwater tab that'll take you right to this plan online.
Great. Thank you. Is there any questions from the public? Or from the other supervisors?
Sorry, it looks like there is something in the chat. I can just read it.
Sure.
Dan, is part of, is part of the goal of the pollution reduction plan to reduce the inputs, root cause of the pollution? Do we know what the major inputs to the pollution is? I hear you speak of the watershed, bank stabilization, and basins, but I'm curious about the root causes to the watershed pollution. Thank you.
Sure, I can answer that. So our streams are impaired for siltation. So I'm looking back through my version of this here right now. See if I can actually list it as. So our three watersheds are, are, are listed for siltation are the issues that we have within it. And the causes of those impairments are water flow variability. So in short, what that, what that means is, is that we have these flash flood events, and during those flash flood events and various heavy storm events with the urbanization that has occurred within the watershed and up slope areas, pretty much all of Chester County, you end up having a large amount of water that comes in that creates erosion on people's, fragile people's properties within the stream banks. And ultimately here, that's, that's what our pollution is. So we're not having other pollutants or serious pollutant issues from other superfund sites or anything else within, within the township. So the, the goal here of DEP is to promote groundwater recharge. The more water we can promote to go into the grounds and recharge the aquifers minimizes the overflow of stormwater into the strings, into the stream banks, causing, causing erosion to occur. So the root cause basically is, is, is trying to promote as much groundwater recharge. And that's what the DEP would prefer us, as far as projects go, to do new basins, basin retrofit projects, and then deal with the stream bank stabilization projects, because the stream bank stabilization is kind of putting a Band-Aid on the water flow variability issues. They'd rather promote that water to go into the ground and therefore minimize how much erosion you're going to occur within the stream banks. So ultimately here, that's, that's the, that's the goal here, the root cause that we're going to try to, try to work on for this, for this watershed, for the all overall watershed areas at this time.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
I see the other comments here, too. I don't know if they, you want to just run through them?
Yeah, so just to follow up on that one, Kathy, Kathy Sotek, got it. Thank you, Dan, for the additional information. The next question, Michael Taylor. How will the HOAs be notified of the process or recommended changes?
So we will, we will not, if the, if a basin is not owned by the township, then we will, are going to have to get permission for, whether it's a private individual owner basin or if it's a, an association, is, we need that buy-in. So if there's a homeowners association that isn't interested in working with the township to do a basin retrofit project, then we move on and find another basin within the township. Luckily, we have lots of basins to choose from here. So, so during this process, as we work through the design, we will reach out to the individual HOAs or individual property owners and say, hey, we'd like to do this project, are you willing to work with us? And, and kind of figure out a way to make this, make this work for both parties. And that, that's the process that will happen. So right now, we show various stormwater management basins to be retrofitted. We have not spoken to those HOAs at this, at this point. That's an item to come up here in the future.
Okay. The next question from Alexa Manning. What type of water quality monitoring is ongoing in these watersheds?
So at this point here, the, all of the impairments that have come through here are, DEP has gone out and they assess streams on a, on a regular basis. And to be honest with you, I don't think they have a limited staff and a lot of, a lot of, a lot of watersheds to look at. So they've gone out and done sampling within watersheds to determine the impairments. So that is the only current monitoring that has gone on to establish whether these watersheds are considered impaired or not impaired. And ultimately here, there, the township is not undergoing water quality monitoring at this stage, as this stage of the game. And ultimately here, our, our goal here is, I'm sure, later stages within this project here, within the MS4 program, I feel that's going to be something that's going to be required, but it's not at this point. So once these projects are complete, though, if we do a basin retrofit in community A, B, or C, we are going to have to monitor that project here to make sure it stays, it's operated properly, maintained properly in perpetuity. So that we, something we'll have to work with the HOA when we do a basin retrofit project, that we have to figure out exactly how that's going to be monitored and how, how make sure that facility's going to be owned and maintained, maintained properly here, coming, coming, moving forward in the future. So, but at this point here, the DEP has done some water quality monitoring, but that's, that's the extent of it.
Okay, Michael Taylor says, thank you, that was a good explanation. And then we have Tony Gorkin. The heart of Euclid Stream Garden, et cetera, is an example in a small way of using riparian buffers to reduce siltation. And I believe that is all the comments or questions that are in that chat box.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Dan, for this. Do you have anything else to add?
So I just want to just make sure that people can go ahead and submit comments to the, to the, to the township here up till October 14th. And then, and we are required as part of that process here to respond to those comments and make sure our plan addresses them as needed. But yes, submit them into the township here, Steph, sometime before, before the 14th, if you like it to be considered for the plan. And again, we'll be, this is an ongoing process. This isn't, once October 14th comes, it's a done deal, everything's complete. So we'll have, we'll plenty of time to work through this over the next five-year period.
Agreed, thank you very much.
And I, I just really quick, we, we do have some stormwater resources for residents on the website, don't we, Scott?
We do. And in each e-newsletter, there's also a feature on stormwater, and you can reduce your impact.
Yeah, so that we can, like, as Dan said, if resident, since we're mostly residential, residents can do their part to help keep stormwater, you know, going into the ground instead of down, down your driveway or into the street and down the storm drain.
When you're heading, sorry. When you're heading over to the website to look at the plan, there's, there's many links to the left that will help with problems and getting results and solutions for stormwater.
All right, with that, appreciate it. We'll move on to the, the next item, thank you, Dan. And the appointment to the Euclid Township Municipal Authority.
Well, I think this is probably the most excited I've ever been about an appointment to the municipal authority. We, Doug Hanley, former township manager, we're very excited to have him interested in participating in the municipal authority. He brings many, many years of experience to the authorities. And I think he, his name speaks for itself, so.
Yes, I think, yes, I think his qualifications are probably better than anything we could possibly find anywhere in this township. So, Amy or Kim, do you want to make a motion to appoint Doug Hanley to the Euclid Township Municipal Authority?
Sure, I'll make a motion to appoint Doug Hanley to the Euclid Township Municipal Authority.
Kim's probably on mute, but I'll I'll second. Um, is there any comments or questions? If not, all in favor?
I.
Hi.
All right, motion passes.
Thanks, Doug.
Did we? Did we lose Kim?
Sorry, I got dropped a few times and now I now I'm using my iPhone.
Okay, we just reported, we just voted to point Doug, did you have any comments or objections?
I think great choice. Thank you, Doug.
Yes, there you go. Uh, okay, thanks. I'll move on to the Eagle disposal renewal.
So the Eagle disposal contract, um, when we signed that, um, we signed it for three years with the option of two additional years. Um, this would be this renewal for 2021 would be the last year we could renew with Eagle. Um, this time next year, we would have to be going out for bid. Um, I, we're asking the board to renew the Eagle contract. Um, we have not had many issues with Eagle. Um, stating that from the past trash companies we've used, um, there is not really many complaints. Um, there's one here and there, um, but they've been a great company to work for or for work with, I'm sorry. Um, so, yeah, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I'll make a motion to uh renew the Eagle disposal contract for 2021.
I second the motion.
Uh, any questions or comments?
I just wanna, can I make a comment? Just a shout out to sanitation workers. They're essential workers and they've been doing an excellent job keeping the trash out of our way while we deal with the coronavirus.
Yes, thank you. All right, if there's no other comments, um, all in favor, the motion to approve the renewal contract for 2021 for Eagle disposal.
I.
I. All right, motion passes. Um, moving on to the uh request for an extension for the preliminary land development plan for the Gray Farm on I buy Worthington Partners to.
Yes, I received an email from Allison Zaro, who's representing the applicant, um requesting this extension. As many are aware, uh, the plans were first submitted uh to you uh back in May. Um, after they were submitted, the plan was revised after talking with township staff after we had a chance to take a look at the plans. Those revised plans were then presented to the planning commission uh at their July planning commission meeting. Those plans did not have a chance to get reviewed by township consultants. So after that July planning commission meeting, they were going back to revise the plans. Uh, they were resubmitted October, I'm sorry, uh August 14th and sent out for reviews. Uh, the reason they're requesting the extension is because they're planning to attend the October 7th planning commission meeting, uh which is obviously after the September 30th extension that was first granted. So uh I also just want to make a note that we did receive public comment from Barry Berger today uh with a few questions and concerns about that. Uh, the reason for the extension, I pretty much just explained. Uh, Worthington Properties is a part of MVR Homes, uh which is Ryan Homes. Um, Tom Kessler has been their point of contact so far. Uh, I would suggest anybody that has any questions or comments about Gray Farm, attend the October 7th uh planning commission meeting.
So tonight, we're just.
That explanation.
You're welcome. Um, I would recommend that you grant the extension until October 31st so that we can get the plan reviewed and comments addressed.
Okay, and today we're only talking about an extension, not any of the details. Okay. Okay, um, can I get a motion to uh grant the extension until October 31st for the preliminary land development plan?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to grant the extension for Gray Brothers Farm until October 31st, 2020.
I second that.
Okay, any questions or comments from the public?
Or from? I do have, uh, this is Barry Berger. I do have one request, the only one that I follow up on from my my comments. Uh, and that is uh whether or not uh it would be possible for the township as this project moves forward to uh uh create some kind of a link on the township homepage so that some of the underlying documents, environmental reports, traffic reports, et cetera, uh are more easily located. Because with the township offices closed, if the township resident wants to be able to evaluate the facts uh without being able to gain access to these documents, it would be very difficult. So would that be a possibility down the road?
Uh, we were just talking about that, um, all right, if you want to say.
Yeah, we are looking into uh putting all of the plan submissions on our website so that you would be able to take a look at the plan or the plan that was submitted. Um, we still need to go through to see if we can put all of the reports and those sort of documents on there. But you are certainly welcome to email me for uh any documents that aren't online.
Okay, thanks very much. I appreciate that response.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other comments? If not, I'll give a motion to, yeah, you made a motion, all in favor?
I.
I, all right, uh, request is granted. Move to the conditional use decision for Max Out LLC at 247 Welsh Pool Road.
Mark, are you taking this or am I?
I can handle this, yes. So this was, um, there was a conditional use proceeding uh at our um last at township's last meeting um related to a um uh health and exercise facility. Uh, it was approved at that time, um, following the the conditional use hearing with conditions. Um, we did prepare a written report and one of the caveats during the approval is that there may be some additional conditions. Um, I don't know that there's anything of significance additionally, but if if the board would like, I could certainly just read over what the conditions are in the written approval.
Why don't you read what you think the public might be interested in, those who were not here last month?
Sure, so maybe why don't I just start out by explaining just what the application is? The app, this is an application for Exton Max Out LLC. And they were requesting a conditional use approval to occupy a basically a 5,000 square foot um area of a larger multi-tenant building to allow for strength and conditioning fitness center at the property which is located at 247 uh Welsh Pool Road. Um, they sought approval pursuant to certain requirements of the township codes require conditional use of proof. Um, and basically, the the main limitations that uh we have have to do with hours of operation, hours of operation of the facility will be limited to 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM seven days a week. Uh, the area of operation uh is limited to approximately the 5,000 square foot of this one suite that they apply for. There's some comments and conditions that were um made by the in the planning commission uh as part of the recommendation of approval that are um as part of the can uh the conditions. Um, and and that's basically it. I mean, the main, the main thing had to do with um hours of operation.
Can I add in there for the public that they are a business that operates only by appointment as well as um training of teams? So the public isn't coming in and out between 5:00 AM and 11:00 PM. It's only by appointment.
And and they did during their testimony, they did note that their peak hours are really prior to the normal workday and after the normal workday, and then on Saturdays and Sundays, it's generally uh in the mornings until about 1:00 PM.
Do we need to uh, Mark, do we need to vote on this or is this already approved or?
Uh, you already approved it, but you could, yeah, why don't you, you can vote on the written decision on the showing.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the written decision for the uh conditional use decision?
I motion that we approve the written um statement for the conditions for um Max Out.
Sorry, I'll second that.
Any uh questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
I.
All right, motion passes. Um, moving to permission to advertise to revisions to chapter 2, 260 dash 204 and 260 dash 209.2 for setbacks uh for tr- transmission pipelines, et cetera.
You like me to handle, take this one as well?
That would be great, Mark.
Okay, sure. So this is a proposal um related to setbacks and also the the implementation of a consultation zone with regard to developments near pipelines. Um, presently, the township has a setback requirement uh for pipelines that have been in place for some time. Um, that is a a 50-foot setback. Um, that has been in place, as I said, for some time. A a lot of that was directed towards the traditional petroleum pipelines. Um, since that time, um, there has been a lot of um different types of pipelines that have either been in installed in the township or have been converted in the township. And in fact, if you look at uh the pipeline map that the county has, Euclid is is the there's a confluence of a number of different pipelines that pass through and traverse the township. Um, the the Chester County has um and they have a pretty robust pipeline website um on their planning that the planning commission has. Um, and they've um worked with a number of consultants and other groups. Um, and they've made some recommendations regarding setbacks. They put together some model ordinances that they believe are appropriate, or at least have recognized model ordinances that have been put together specifically for Chester County as well as some other ordinances. And what's being proposed in this inconsistent with what um the county and some other organizations have recommended is a 300-foot setback uh for uh new development and new uses or new residential structures and new commercial and industrial uses uh within 300 feet of a pipeline setback as well as uh what's being called a consultation zone, which uh requires a developer really just to reach out and communicate uh with the pipeline companies uh within 1,000 feet of the center line of the pipeline.
Okay, uh, tonight we're just asking from your, it's just being asked for permission to advertise.
Yeah, this is not, there's no decision being made tonight. This is just putting it out for advertisement so that um you know, the as required by the MPC and and the, you know, other requirements so that notice can get out uh and that it'll be dealt with in the future at a future meeting.
I believe we're aiming for October 13th, which is our Tuesday night meeting.
Okay, all right, great. Um, get a get a motion to to uh grant permission to advertise to the revisions for chapter 260 dash 204 and 260 dash 509.2.
I'll I'll make a motion to grant permission to advertise revisions to chapter 260 dash 204 and 260 dash 509.2 regarding setbacks of new development and transmission pipelines and establishment of a consultation zone.
I second that motion.
Okay, uh, and is there any comments or questions?
There is, there is one in the comment box. Um, Michael Taylor, does this apply for all pipelines or just NGL pipelines?
This is going to apply to both natural gas and petroleum pipelines, uh petroleum products. The is is sort of a broad umbrella term that includes what's been commonly referred to as the hazardous liquids pipelines as well. So it'll cover natural gas pipelines, hazardous liquid pipelines, and even your traditional petroleum pipelines.
All right, uh, is there any other comments? Not um, all in favor?
I.
All right, permission granted. Um, so we'll move on to the permission to advertise for the complement comprehensive plan hearing.
Right, so um, one of the things we have been talking about for the comprehensive plan, which is finally getting to the point where we're ready to have a hearing, um, was the idea of potentially having a separate meeting for that plan so that we could encourage, you know, residents to attend. Um, what we're asking for the board to um give us permission to advertise this evening is to hold a special meeting on uh November 11th at 7:00 PM uh to have a presentation on the comprehensive plan.
You need a motion?
I'll I'll make a motion to grant permission to advertise for a comprehensive plan hearing on November 11th at 7:00 PM.
I second the motion.
All right, any questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
I. I.
All right, motion passes. Uh, permission to advertise for bids for the 2020 Eagleview Treatment Plant upgrades.
Right, so we we have a few projects in the pipeline for the Eagleview Treatment Plant, but the the first is really going to be revolving around our variable frequency drives um as well as our programmable logic control uh board. Uh, without getting too into the scientific weeds here, um, we're asking the board for permission this evening is to put a bid that we've been working with Janet Fleming, um, our sewer engineer, uh to put together um to to get bids for the work to be completed. So um, we would come back to the board once those bids have been received to award the bid similar to other projects.
I'll I'll make a motion to um grant permission to advertise for bids for the 2020 Eagleview Treatment Plant upgrades.
I second the motion.
Or any questions, comments? Kim noted that Dr. Dornman, the public is invited to read the conference of plan and provide feedback, which is posted on the website, so thank you.
Yes, it is posted on the website for public view.
All right, all in favor?
I.
I, all right, motion passes. Um, and the Hanking Group's uh conditional use plan submission for uh Eagleview Town Center 2.
Uh, yes, we received the plan submission today from uh Allison Zaro on behalf of the applicant, uh Hanking Group. Uh, they're proposing a town center on the property off Constitution Drive, which is comprised of 364 apartments, uh which would be within several buildings on that property. Uh, a clubhouse, an existing office building, and a proposed 40,000 square foot office building. Uh, they do need a couple of conditional use approvals. Um, but this plan is just the this submission tonight is just acknowledgement that the township received it.
Okay. Okay. To get a motion to accept the plan submission.
Do we need to accept it?
Do we need to? Okay, right, all right. Well, then with that, we'll move on to uh the the resolutions which versus uh resolution 2020 dash 18, which is the 2021 police and uniform minimum, non-uniform, uh, excuse me, uh, minimum municipal obligation.
Yes, this is a resolution we do every year that establishes the minimum amount that we have to contribute to each of the pension funds, one for the police, one for the non-uniform. So for 2021, our minimum up minimal minimum municipal obligation for the police pension plan is And the unit minimum municipal obligation for the non-uniform pension plan is $204,000.
Do you have any questions or comments? Maybe, or can we get a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2020 dash 18, the 2021 police and non-uniform minimum municipal obligation.
I second the motion.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted. Moving to the twenty twenty dash nineteen, the adoption of the Township Emergency Operations Plan.
Right. So, the resolution before the board this evening is an administrative procedure that the township is required to complete every two years for our emergency operations plan. Pretty much what this resolution is stating is we reviewed the ordinance and are adopting it for the next two-year period.
Alright, can we get a motion to approve?
Is there anything? Scott, is there anything on that resolution that you want to share with the public, maybe? And any important key points, or Mike Holmes?
It's actually, it's a fairly short, short resolution. It just, it points to areas of the Pennsylvania code that require the municipalities to prepare, maintain, and keep current and emergency operations plan for the prevention and minimization of injury for, you know, various disasters that could affect New Glen Township. I mean, other than that, pretty, pretty much it's just an administrative procedure for adoption of the of the current plan that we're, that we're using. Mike, I don't know if there's anything else that you want to add, but just want to make sure that I'm.
No, you're correct. I mean, it's, this is required, like you said, every two years, just so we're eligible for funding and, you know, for state and theme of funding in the event of, you know, disasters. So, they look the plan over, approve it, and we just have to adopt it by resolution.
Thank you. I make a motion, we move resolution, we approve Resolution twenty twenty dash nineteen, the adoption of the Township Emergency Operations Plan.
I'll second that motion.
Any comments or questions? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, the Resolution twenty twenty dash nineteen is approved. Move to Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty, the Peck Road Culvert Grant Authorization.
Just a little history, we have a culvert on Peck Road that is notorious for flooding during almost any, what you would consider a high-rain event. What the township is trying to do with this resolution is apply for a multimodal transportation fund grant that would help us in redesigning that culvert to hopefully, you know, reduce the flooding that happens in that area. Just this year alone, we've had several issues with the higher rain events. We have an approximate cost for the project at six hundred thousand dollars. We would be requesting four hundred and twenty thousand dollars as part of this grant. But this resolution is pretty much just authorizing Katie Churchill and myself to sign on behalf of the township.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty, the Peck Road Culvert Grant Authorization, giving Katie and Scott authorization to sign on behalf of the township.
I second that.
Is there any questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Alright, resolution is passed, and the final resolution for tonight is the twenty twenty dash twenty-one, the Master Caster Agreement with PennDOT.
So, this resolution allows PennDOT to raise manholes on roadways within the township in order to do maintenance. The, this agreement will take, be effective November first, or I'm sorry, October first, twenty twenty, and it will remain in effect until September thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-one, the Master Caster Agreement with PennDOT, which has a really good name, by the way, Master Caster.
I second the motion.
Alright, and any comments or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, resolution passes. Next, we'll, I'm going to provide our update on the activities for this, Snoko, ME two slash ME two X program in a construction project in New Glen. First, talk about the, which is H D D three ten, which is their designation for the site, which is at Hermano West Drive going towards Upper New Glen. Snoko's reporting that they are six percent complete for pilot hole drilling for their twenty-inch pipe, starting from the Upper New Glen Township side. Casing work is underway in New Glen Township, which many people are maybe aware of. Actually, the casing work is, I'm sorry, casing work is complete in New Glen Township at Hermano West Drive. The pipe pullback is currently scheduled for the end of January. The sixteen-inch pipe has already been installed, installed in that location. At H D D three twenty, which is the Hermano, Hermano West Drive going towards Wharton Boulevard, the twenty-inch pipe and the sixteen-inch pipe work is complete. Their H D D three thirty-one, which is at the Dairy Queen in the Eagleview area, going towards North Ford Road. The sixteen-inch pipe has previously been installed. The twenty-inch pipe is in the final reaming process and is thirteen, about thirteen percent complete, and pullback is scheduled for early November. For H D D three fifty, which is the North Woodford Road going towards Devon Drive, the twenty-inch pipe H D D work is complete, as well as the sixteen-inch pipe work, but restoration work will, is not scheduled to occur until after the three thirty-one, the Dairy Queen site and the Devon Drive sites are complete. For H D D three sixty, which is the Devon Drive going in New Glen, going towards Shone Road, which is in West, West Whiteland. The, for the sixteen-inch pipe, the currently thirty-eight percent complete, they consider for the final reaming process. There is, obviously, as many people know, there is a water flow at the borehole in West Whiteland, which is they're, they're managing on their side according to what DNP, DEP is requiring at the time. No additional casing work is anticipated to occur at Devon Drive for the sixteen-inch pipe at this point. The pullback is anticipated in mid-October based on the current condition, conditions. No work has started for the twenty-inch pipe at that site. And casing work will be required for the twenty-inch site when, when that, when that occurs, which is not currently scheduled. So, that is the update. Is there any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, one other note, I think a lot of people are aware that a few weeks back, there was an inadvertent return and a depression at the Marsh Creek, in the area of Marsh Creek. On Friday, Pennsylvania DEP did issue an order to Snoko directing that they move that pipeline about a, about a mile further away from Marsh Creek. And at this point, operations at that drill site, which I believe is H D D two ninety, are stopped. And, but the, I think the plan is that it's going to be moved up the ways about a mile.
I have somebody in the chat box. On September tenth, Tara sent a warning letter to Snoko to abate the noise, or they will be fined. Did they stop, or were they fined? If fined, how much? If they continue and refuse to stop the noise, can they be arrested? What would happen if a private citizen refused to stop violating our noise ordinance over and over again? Would a private citizen be arrested?
Just before we, before we answer that, is can you provide your, your full name, just because we usually overlook your record?
So, it cut off. I think this, I think it came up as Margaret Quinn, but I tried to click on it, it just says M A R. I, I think it's Margaret Quinn. It is Margaret Quinn, yes, okay.
Scott, do you want, do you have all the information on the, well?
I couldn't unmute. You know, Dan's still in the, in the room. I, we did not issue a fine for the casing work, because I do believe that they had completed it prior to, or shortly thereafter issuance of the letter. Mark, I don't know if you want to expand on, you know, some of the legal implications here with the request, but no, no fine was, or citation was issued by the township, just the order.
Yeah, the, the ordinance calls for the issuance of a, essentially an order notice prior to the issuance of a fine. If, if after the issuance of that notice, the activity continues, a citation with a fine can be issued. There's other avenues that can be taken as well. You know, that the ordinance allow, but my understanding is that the, the noise stopped either was already over or stopped shortly after the, the letter was issued.
I don't, I mean, and as, as, in regards to your other parts, your questions about a private citizen, obviously, we have noise, noise reports often throughout the township. Usually, an officer will respond, and if the noise is still occurring, they will go warning. But, if, you know, all of these things would depend on the circumstances, but we're not giving, if, if the question is essentially are we treating Snoko differently and we treat private citizens? Obviously, there are some specifics that are different because they're a construction site and have certain exceptions in an ordinance as opposed to. But, no, we're not being, we're not ignoring certain activities that we think are above and beyond what the ordinance allows. I don't know if that answered your question.
How much would the fine be, she asked?
I believe, I'm not looking at it, I believe it can be up to a thousand dollars.
Per day, correct?
Per day per violation, yes.
Are there any other questions?
I have nothing else in the chat box.
If not, I'll move on to the announcements. So, for the, the, on September sixteenth, the Environmental Advisory Council will meet at six thirty PM. On October seventh, the Planning Commission will meet at seven thirty PM. On October eighth, the Historical Commission will meet at seven thirty PM. And on October thirteenth, which is a Tuesday, the Board of Supervisors will meet at seven thirty PM. And I think all these are on Zoom, even though the historical commission has had a wall at our house and it's been done over Zoom. With that, I'll open it up to any comments or questions on any township-related subject.
I just wanted to say that all the meetings on Zoom are open to the public. You do not have to be a member to sit in on one or two or all of the meetings. And Bill, do we have any openings on any of the that we want to announce to the public?
Don't think we do right now for the one, no.
Okay.
Yeah. And if there's any additional questions or comments, just either speak up or type in the text box, otherwise we can adjourn the meeting. Well, I think we can get a motion to adjourn.
You want to just mention that we have the conditional use hearing for Audubon after the meeting?
Yes, I think we should take maybe a five-minute break and then do the Audubon Conditional Use Hearing.
Scott, do you want, if people, Scott Greenlee, if you, if people want to stay, do you want them to log off and log back in? Or is it easier for you and them if they just stay in and take a five-minute break?
If they would stay on, I think that would just be easiest, just stay muted for now. Thank you.
Alright, can we get a motion to adjourn?
I motion we.
Yeah, sorry. Oh, there's one right here.
There's another question that just popped up.
The North Ship Road.
I'm not sure what that refers to.
Could you elaborate? Person, yeah, asking question?
Can they turn on your mic, Scott?
Yeah. Brian D., if you, if you'd like to unmute yourself and just explain what that comment means, I think that would probably just be easiest.
I think he's asking about the conditional use.
Right. I think you're talking about the Vanguard property, and that is what we just announced will be following this meeting. So, if that's what you're interested in, please stay on, and we'll, we'll get to that hearing in about five minutes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Alright, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll meet at eight forty-two, we'll start up.
Would you like me to get started, Mr. Chairman, or?
Yeah, so Tara, if you're ready as well, then.
I'm ready.
Alright, let's get started. Call the meeting in order, or the conditional use here in order, I guess.
Port, port here?
Yes.
So, this is the conditional use hearing for the Audubon Management Corp., who is the applicant, related to a property at one one three zero North Pottstown Pike, which is also known as the Vanguard Property. This is located in the PIC, Planned Industrial Commercial District. As part of this application, the applicant is proposing to construct three warehouse buildings with a total of one million nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty square feet and one thousand one hundred and forty-four parking spaces, along with a thirty-acre park with trails and other amenities. They are requesting conditional use approval, which is required for, one, facilities for outdoor recreation, not including shooting or archery ranges, motor vehicle racing or amusement parks. Two, structures over two percent over well, stories of thirty-five feet in height, up to sixty-five feet in height. Three, any non-residential structure over forty thousand square feet or having a total combined parking space of over two hundred. The applicant is also seeking an extension of the construction period for good cause. The site was previously approved for approximately two million square foot of office space for Vanguard. Initially, the, the board has a number of exhibits. And before I go through that, is, is counsel for the applicant present?
Yes, Sridhantak Kearney from Hamburg Rupert, present for the applicant.
Thank you. I'm going to go through, have you received a copy of the, the board's exhibits?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to go through them, which is also, at the same time, it'll identify the dates of newspaper notification, neighbor notification, and other comment letters. Exhibit B one is application letter with exhibit A dated June thirty, twenty twenty. Exhibit B one A is application letter dated August ten, twenty twenty. Exhibit B two is the public notice that was sent to the Daily Local. And exhibit B three is proof of publication in the Daily Local, which occurred on August thirty, twenty twenty, and September seventh, twenty twenty. Exhibit B four is abutting property owners who were notified. Exhibit B five is the E.B. Walsh Review Letter dated July twenty-third, twenty twenty. Exhibit B six is McManic Associates, McManic Associates Review Letter dated July thirty-one, twenty twenty. Exhibit B seven is Hydratera Professionals Review Letter dated July thirty, twenty twenty. Exhibit B eight is Stube Consulting Review Letter dated July fourteen, twenty twenty. Exhibit B nine is Euclid Police Department Memorandum dated July twenty-one, twenty twenty. Exhibit B ten is Euclid Fire Marshal Memorandum dated August third, twenty twenty. Exhibit B eleven is A memorandum from Laura Bensky, EAC, or an email from Laura Bensky. Of the Environmental Advisory Council dated September 2, 2020. Exhibit B12 is Historic Commission Letter dated August 17, 2020. Exhibit B13 is a draft planning commission meeting minutes from September 2, 2020. And exhibit B14 is planning commission meeting minutes of August 5, 2020.
Mark, can I also add exhibit B15, which is the Fiscal Impact Analysis Review Letter? From Ray Ott and Associates dated August 18, 2020. I received it after the fact, and I believe the applicant received the copy as well.
Tara, I did not receive a copy of that. Are you able to email that?
I will do that right now. Okay.
I, I will not ask you about B15 yet, but is the applicant, does the applicant have any objections to board exhibits B1? And 1A through B14?
No.
So those will be made part of the record. I will circle back once you've had an opportunity to review. Exhibit B15 to ask if you have any objections to that.
Thank you.
So the next order of business is going to be to find out and, and request. Anyone who desires to have party status. And before I ask about that, and we do already have a, a couple of. Requests for party status, I want to explain what party status is. Explain what it allows you to do, and also what, what you can do even if you're not a party. So some people frankly may decide they don't want to request party status because they're able to do what they're, want to do just as commoners. But party status is available to people who might be impacted by the proposed use. It allows a person to fully participate in the hearing. It allows you to cross-examine witnesses, to present your own case and to testify on the record. However, you do not need to be a party to provide public comment. There will be a public comment period available for anyone in the public, party or non-parties to make comment. If you are not a party, you're not able to appeal the decision. To the Court of Common Pleas, if that is something that you're unsatisfied with. However, I will also note that just because you're a party in this proceeding, doesn't necessarily mean you're going to be able to appeal to the Court of Common Pleas. The standards are a little bit more rigorous in the Court of Common Pleas than they are before the Board of Supervisors. So even if you become a party here, you may still have some hurdles to go through to become a party. In court, and the fee to become a party is $20. We do have two applications already that I'll deal with. First. The first is, and I believe both of these. Both of these entities are represented by attorney Stephen Buck. The first is Pepper PA Associates. Mr. Buck, are you present?
Yes, I'm here.
So as far as Pepper PA Associates go, can you just tell us what they are and where they are located?
Yes, Pepper PA Associates owns the parcel right across the street from the subject piece. They lease that property to JW Pepper and Sons, Inc., a music publishing distributor.
And. Did you receive, or did your, your client receive notice of this hearing?
Yes.
Ms. Kearney, do you have any questions you'd like to ask?
Well, Mr. Buck and I spoke today in reference to the request for party status, and I did see on exhibit B4. At the Pepper PA Associates owns property 33-4-30, so I have no objection to them being a party.
Okay, then, so Pepper PA Associates LP will be granted party status for this hearing. The second. Request you submitted, Attorney Buck, was for DFT Inc. Can you please tell us who they are and where they are located?
DFT Inc. is a valve manufacturer. They're located at 140 Sherry Boulevard. On the same side of the street as this, as the project.
Can you tell us how far they are away from the applicant's property?
Not very far. They're right around the bend on the other side of Tanner Drive.
Did they receive a written notice from the applicant of the hearing?
I believe they did, but I'm not positive of that.
Okay. Ms. Kearney, do you have any questions?
Yeah, and Mr. Buck, if you know, do you know what parcel number they own? Because the way that B4 is set forth, it does indicate parcel numbers.
No, I don't. I just, they're at 140 Sherry. I don't know which parcel number that is.
I normally, Mr. Freed, make objections to anyone who has it to standing, to anyone who hasn't received the notice. So I'm not quite sure, because some of the properties, the addresses are like in a borsum and stuff, so it's unclear. I don't have a 140 Sherry Boulevard on my list for B4.
I'm trying to look it up real quick.
We can also, I mean, Tyra, if you're able to find it quickly, that's fine. If not, we can reserve ruling on that and we can determine what the. What the parcel number is to determine if the applicant has any objection.
They are not on. The list, because they're not immediately abutting.
Are you able, Mr. Buck, or is your client able to estimate how far? Their property is from the, the applicant's property?
Trying to get a.
There's one, the, there's one property in between. Tanner Drive and 140. And that, and that is the parcel 334-30.10.
Maybe 150 feet, something like that on a, if my scale, if my scale on this map is right. I mean, it looks like maybe 150 to 200 feet off the. Easternmost piece of the property, and actually maybe even a little closer if you go up towards the north.
Ms. Kearney, do you have an objection?
Just, Mr. Freed, normally I object if they haven't been given notice. Again, I'll, I'll reiterate, though, that obviously we'll listen to any of the comments or questions. And take that into consideration, and the applicant will certainly work with the EFT, EFT, I apologize, EFT, Inc.
All right, given that we're in a bit of a little unique, normally we probably have a map up and we could look. And everyone could see exactly how far we are. I'm going to reserve judgment. On the determination of, of your second client, which shouldn't affect you, I don't believe tonight, because obviously you'll still have the ability to. To cross-examine and, and participate, Mr. Buck, so. And we'll hopefully be able by the, the next. I'm a, I know I'm jumping ahead, but my understanding is there may be another night at least of hearing. So certainly by the next hearing, we'll be able to make a determination on that.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other parties or individuals or entities? Present tonight that would like to seek party status? All right, I am not seeing any. So with that, Ms. Kearney, I will turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you. And as Mr. Lister had indicated. The applicant here is here tonight for conditional use relief for certain items in your zoning ordinance. The use itself, the distribution warehouse is a permitted use, and the office use associated with the. Distribution warehouse is also a permitted use. What we're here for is conditional use for what I'll consider dimensional items. One, for the height, and two, for the, if you're over 40,000 square feet, the non-residential building and have 200 parking spaces. That's a distinct additional use also, as indicated by Mr. Freed, for the park. However, in the review letter by the township engineer, he did indicate that if parks open to the public, we do not need a conditional use. For the actual park, and Mr. Nielsen will be testifying that the intent is to have that park open to the public. Also, we needed relief for the extension of time similar to Vanguard. It's under the section 806.4L. In order to construct in phases, the three distribution warehouse centers. We have four witnesses for hearing tonight. The first witness would be John Nielsen, who's a representative of the applicant. Kestra Kelly, who's from BL Companies, an engineer. The traffic engineer from Traffic Planning and Design, Eric Ostumchuk. And finally, David Babbitt, who's a land planner. And I did receive. That Mr. Babbitt had received Mr. Ott's review of his fiscal impact, so he, we are aware of it. And we can accept it as the exhibit B15.
That'll be made, I'm sorry, thank you. That'll be made part of the record as well. Thank you.
I'm not sure if you want to swear them all in at once, or we want to do it one at a time.
Whatever, if they're going to be, however you want to do it, if they're going to be testifying one at a time, we can just swear them in one at a time. That's fine.
I'll ask that Mr. Nielsen be sworn in.
And Mr. Buck, just, just so I'm clear, until. We rule otherwise, you can, you can ask questions on behalf of both your clients.
Thank you.
Mr. Nielsen, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And John, can you spell your last name for the reporter?
Yes, it's N-E-I-L-S-O-N.
And can you describe by whom you are employed?
I'm employed by Audubon Land Development Corp.
And can you briefly describe to the board who you are?
I'm the president of a 58-year-old family real estate development company that does multiple disciplines of. Development and management in residential, industrial, retail, hospitality, and senior housing. Some of our projects include Shenondale Retirement Community, the Greater Philly Expo in Oaks. Many industrial buildings, about 5 million square feet of industrial. Five hotels, and so we've been at this a long time. We're a. Multi-generational, multi-generational, three generations in the business now, and a fourth little crowd coming up, but they're a little young yet to attend these meetings. So, but we've been at this, like I said, 58 years. I've been doing this about 40 years.
And one of the exhibits that is shown on the table of contents that we're viewing is the redacted agreement of sale between Nelson Realty Trusts. Which is Vanguard and Audubon Management Corp. for the four properties that are the subject of the conditional use application. And that would be exhibit tab seven, correct?
That's correct.
And that agreement of sale is still in place and is still active, correct?
That's correct.
And can you explain your relationship to Audubon Management Corp., which is the equitable owner of the property and the applicant before the board?
I am the president of that company as well.
And Audubon Land Development Corp. was listed as the developer in the conditional use application. Can you explain what that company is and who you are to that company?
We use a development company. It's our own development company, called Audubon Land Development. I am the president of that company as well.
And if we could bring up the conditional use plan, can you explain for the board and the neighbors what you are proposing?
Yes, that would be exhibit two. Plan one, exhibit two. You could actually go to that other slides if.
Is it in there?
It's in that group, yeah, right there. The first slide there, and I can reference them in my number as opposed to the exhibit that is exhibit two. This is the plan that we developed. My daughter Amber and I had, after we were successful in convincing Vanguard that, you know, we were. A, someone who would be responsible in the community and with some history in many disciplines of development. We entered into an agreement in August of. 2019, and my daughter and I, Amber, attended just about every possible meeting the township had from the Parks Board, the Planning Commission, Board of Supervisors. Environmental Advisory Council, Industrial Development Authority. Historical Commission, Sewer Board, Comprehensive Plan Committee, Community Day Committee. Pretty much tried to get a real good understanding of what, how the community functions, how they operate. And what's important to them, and I think that's an integral part of, of any development program. Is that you understand, you know, the neighborhood that you're working in and how it impacts them. And so after, after many in-person meetings, obviously, we. Had been listening carefully to the comprehensive plan meetings, and there was some discussion at the meetings about some residential opportunity. And after a number of meetings, they concluded that, in fact, this site was best served. To continue to remain in the PIC zoning district. So with that in mind, we started to look for opportunities in that zoning ordinance. Just about that exact time, the pandemic started, and. That created a whole nother host of challenges, and in the early days was obviously very concerning. But one of the things that we quickly learned is that we, because of e-commerce. Last mile distribution, on sharing and near sharing, as a result of that. There were supply chain issues, I think all of us experienced at some level, and so there was this measurable surge in the. Desire to have distribution facilities at that time. And, and then you tack on top of that, that we all had to learn. You know, what I'll call the technology adaptation curve, what would have taken 10 years with e-commerce and, you know, eventually saying, yeah, I'll buy online. That condensed to six months, and that even put more pressure on the desire for distribution. So we studied the distribution market, we, from our own experiences and with the 5 million feet that we manage, you know, now, a couple of them are a million foot buildings. We saw this demand, and we thought, you know, if we can do a good job up here, build Class A distribution warehouses. You know, and provide, you know, 45%, well, actually it's 35%, but in this case, it's 45% what we design. For the distribution facilities, we then said, you know, after listening to all the park board meetings, the EAC meetings, we thought, you know, we're going to. I think we could do a real nice park there on that corner and maintain the general character of Sherry Boulevard and Route 100. With a lot of greenways from, you know, pretty much the whole corner of the property is going to be utilized as, as a park. And I can get into more details about that later, but essentially, that's how we came up with this plan, and then we went through the process of understanding, okay, well, we, how do you get there? And that's where this conditional use process took us. So that's really how we got to this point. And then what we have next is, the next slides are, what are these Class A buildings going to look like? That's the first thing people are going to want to know. These are not your typical tin-sided warehouses. These are. These are truly the Class A model that the top tenants in the country want to see. And in order to attract them, you have to create this really first-class environment with, through architecture, landscaping, buffering, you know, just a complete package to say, hey, we want to, we want to come here. We want to be part of this property. And the proximity to the turnpike can't be understated. It's, it's a huge issue to them to be their major arterials. So given what we want to do in terms of the architecture and the location, we think we have a great recipe to attract first-class tenants to Euclid Township. Want to slide down just to give it a little flavor of the different building types. Again, you know, not, not tin, architectural breaks in the building, you know, facades above, that run above the roof line to try to create some dimensional breaks in the building. Continue on down. This is, you know, standing back more on the side where you'd see some, some, you know, the transportation vehicles, the trucks, and of course, the office building on the side. Again, just another example of some of the architecture that we want to see put there. The main reason for this isn't so much the architecture, but given the location of the building A along the turnpike, we will be raising along Route 100. So what I was trying to show here is that there'll be a wall built along the frontage of this building along Route 100. And that's really what this is to show, that, that wall presentation.
And John, these were the, the architectural renderings that we had shown to the planning commission, correct?
They are. Yeah, all these plans have been seen by the planning commission. I went through these with the Historical Commission and, you know, showed these various plans to them. And we've gotten generally positive feedback, including unanimous recommendations for the Historical Commission as well as the Planning Commission. Some recommendations from the EAC. The Park Board was taking it under advisement, but seemed very enthused about the idea.
And you're willing to work with the township on the architecture as part of the land development process?
Absolutely. I think the blend of architecture, landscaping, walls, you know, berms, all to create a pleasant streetscape. We've done some, some streetscapes further down. I think that would be, well, we could stop at the park quick. I'll just give you. Okay, you can, all right, that's fine, right there. So, so this is kind of a blow up of the park area. My thoughts here were that, again, most of the parks in the township, there's about a dozen of them. And they primarily are centered around sports-related, active, engaged, you know, sports for children. And I'm certainly not against that. I think they're wonderful community builders. And I've been a huge fan. All my kids went through the program. So, you know, I can appreciate the need. However, I think in this location, given you have such a large portion of these sports handled in a lot of your other parks, I thought with the historical buildings that are on this site, which are shown in the upper part of the screen, with the environmental sensitive nature of this area of the property, that you could blend the passive-type recreation activities, maybe a dog park, and tie into the existing walking trail that borders along Sherry Boulevard. About a mile walk there, have electric charging stations, given its proximity to the turnpike and major thoroughfares. So you come in there, charge your car, walk your dog, take a walk around the, the area. You know, utilize native plants. Kind of like what Tony was talking about earlier in the meeting, for those that were on. She gave a good example of some of the things that can be done. Balancing the maintenance needs of the township, I think is really important. We don't want to create a maintenance nightmare for the township. We're interested in utilizing areas into more native species where there's less maintenance. And a number of the things that, that she mentioned, rain gardens and, you know, butterfly habitats. Add all those to it, park benches, more of a passive nature. So our goal here is to create something the township can be proud of. I realize that there's a development behind it, but I also feel to take advantage of these, all these blends of interests in this area and 30 acres, which doesn't come easy in, in the township today. As opposed to just keeping an open space would be a positive asset to the community. And if you slide up one more slide, it just gives a kind of a flavor of what we're, what we're, what we're looking at in terms of, you know, a trail, some, a park naming. We'll have to come up with a name. I really would like to blend the historical group, the EAC, the planning commission, the park board, and the township in, in conversation to say, what can we do here to be really special? How can we blend the environment, educate, historical preservation, energy management, and renewables? How can we blend that into a, into a nice, walkable, passive area? And that's my goal. Obviously, the picture on the lower left was pre-COVID. But as it turns out, you know, hopefully, that'll all be the storm that passes and we'll be on with the business at hand and have some fun out there and celebrate, you know, us being back together again when we get past this. So that's pretty much the park. The next section, the next group of slides include, which I guess would be Exhibits 12, are streetscapes from various angles of the property. So this, this angle is from Route 100. You're actually in the northbound lane. This depicts the barn and the silo. I don't quite see the silo in this, in this picture, but it is there in, in the previous one. Maybe you got to reduce it a little bit. Yeah, okay, there's one with a T.
Did I do that?
Yep, it's, it's better now. You just have to come over to the left. Anyway, that, that ramp that you see is what we're hoping will be the ramp onto the turnpike. Welcome to Euclid. We can do whatever the township wants. I've been, having come here for a year, that silo has some magic in this township. You know, people say, you know where the silo is, and I guess that, so we were just using it more of a, as a, you know, a site area that is an identifier to, to Euclid Township. Obviously, the historic buildings will be restored and renovated. In the background, you see the largest building, Building A. And if you look in the upper right corner, you can see where that picture is taken from. I, I can't quite see the whole picture, but it should be there. This is, see the arrow on the plan? That's where the picture is taken from. That's the angle that you see. Next slide. So this, this is looking at the larger building, the Building A coming north on 100, looking from an angle shown on the arrow plan there. And then the next slide is really the park plan. Looking at the park. Now, in this particular diagram, we, we have a little bit too much of maintenance in this. But we certainly intend to work with the groups that I mentioned to, to minimize that maintenance cost so that truly there's a benefit here to the township with as minimal cost as possible. And then the last slide from a street view is at the corner of Sherry Boulevard and Route 100.
And John, let me, let me go back to the park. And the intent with the park is to make it available for public use, correct?
That is correct. Yes, we are, we are, we believe that you're bringing the community together is, is a part of the fabric of any community. And truly that this is another one of those assets and amenities that the township can add to their list of, you know, really great amenities already in a little different setting, in a little, little different programming, but also enjoyed, can be enjoyed by, you know, all the residents and passersby as well.
And you had indicated about the historic structures. And applicant is willing to preserve the same historic structures that Vanguard intended to preserve as part of its conditional use, correct?
Yes, I am. I, I've studied what they did. I've looked at the properties. There's some really good assets there. There's a couple that, you know, obviously need some help. But yes, we definitely want to preserve, maintain, and do exactly what Vanguard did and bring them up to a level where the town can be proud of, of the product of taking history and bringing it back to life.
And I think you may have indicated this already. You are agreeable to working with the Historical, Historical Commission and.
Absolutely. I've been attending their meetings and regularly and even through the pandemic and keeping up to speed.
And the views that, those views that we had just gone through, those viewscape renderings, you had shown them to the planning commission also, correct?
I did, yes.
And Ben, can you explain why Audubon Management Corp. is proposing the use of the distribution warehouse?
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, in, to sum it up, I would say that it serves the regional and local needs, especially in today's e-commerce and, and supply chain issues. There's a huge demand for onshoring and, and correcting these issues that have been developed as a result of e-commerce. It's created this, a big demand. It's a permitted use. Obviously, you have, you know, conditional use for the size and the parking and the height. But essentially, these uses are in high demand, especially along major arterials.
And I just wanted to ask you, there's going to be no bulk storage of liquid or gaseous fuels except for consumption on the premises, correct?
There will not.
And the applicant will meet all building code requirements, including that the buildings must be fully sprinkled.
That is correct.
And I think you were up to, can you just describe for the board and the neighbors where the proposed use will be located? I think we have an aerial and the, yep, we have the zoning map and the aerial to show.
So if you look at the zoning map, the property is pretty much in the center of that circle there along Sherry Boulevard, the turnpike. So about 82% of our frontage is, is surrounded by property either we own or is the Pennsylvania turnpike. Turnpike is about half of our frontage. And then as you come around the turnpike and go down Route 100, we own the property in gray on there, on the, on the opposite side of Route 100. In addition to that, we own the property on Sherry Boulevard, all the way up to the JW Pepper Building on the corner. So there's about 16% of our property that, that would be fronting or across the street from, or bordering our, our warehouse distribution facilities, all of which tells me that we want to do a really good job being thoughtful of the neighborhood, including JW Pepper, which we spoke to today. And we want to make sure that we minimize those impacts visually and also with trip generation, which Eric from TPD will get into those next. And also, we want to do the same for the Chester Book Academy, which is in the pink inside the circle. We would, we're about 300, about a football field length away from their building. We're about a football length away from the edge of Sherry Boulevard, across from Pepper, and about 550 feet away from their building, with building. On our side of the road, we're about 130 feet to a parking lot where the, where the trucks would be. And we are intending to, in that 100 feet or 130 feet, we're intending to do landscaping, to actually sit with the neighboring folks and go through our landscape plan. We have a landscape architect on, on, on this project. And we want to come up with a way to minimize any view shed that they might have as relates to the trucks and trucking. Obviously, the building you're going to see, but we believe the architecture there, which we'll be happy to share with them, will in itself share a positive view. Maybe not the same as a cornfield, but certainly with proper landscaping and, and buffering and burming, fencing, if appropriate. We think we can do a really good job to, to maintain a, a good-looking view shed across that area. In addition to that, all along Sherry Boulevard, we start with the park. And then we carry that greenway, like I said, down to 130 feet, right up across from the JW Pepper Building.
And if you go to the next slide, Tara, I think you may have discussed most of this, John, but this was the aerial.
Yeah, we thought it was important to understand what's around the area. If you look at, if you look at the area the township had in mind now, the PI is, obviously, you can see industrial buildings in, in that area there. The PIC, they just did a 423,000. There was 250 and they expanded it by 185,000. Right across Sherry Boulevard, directly into this site there. USCC has a 423,000 square foot complex where they are manufacturing and obviously shipping out of that location directly across Sherry Boulevard from, from where we're going to be proposing these distribution facilities. So what you see there is a band all along the turnpike of industrial, flex, office, retail, you know, one-story, multi-story office, and then some, what I would call accessory services that would serve that needs, like daycare, which is, you know, not uncommon to have where you have a big employment base.
I'm sorry. While we're on this plane, can I just point out, this is the DFT building right here.
Okay.
Thank you. And I have, I have just a quick question, Ms. Carey. These 14 slides, are they marked as exhibits?
Yes, we sent them over. They're all exhibits in my table of contents. And I think John was saying them as he was going through them. We sent them over as a separate download because the Dropbox was so large because of the. It made it hard to go through it. So yes, everything that John was testifying to, you'll see, the conditional use plan is Exhibit 2. The facade examples are all listed in Exhibit 13. The park, the park sketch was Exhibit 14, the park design concepts was 15. The viewscapes were all in Exhibit 12. The, the township zoning map was Exhibit 10. And the aerial was Exhibit 11. It just made it a little bit easier to send it as a separate download because this one's very large.
Thank you.
Yes.
The other thing on this area is that there's, the heights of these buildings, you know, we're, we're looking at about a 50-foot height on our buildings. We could go as high as 65 with, by reducing our impervious. So you have a built-in formula in the township. There are, there are plenty of examples of 50-plus-foot buildings in that area. Certainly, the, there's X and Commons there. There's, there's, which is a five-story building. There's hotels that are all five-story plus buildings. And wouldn't be uncommon to see a 50-foot structure in, in that, what I would call corridor there of industrial uses.
John, do you have a specific end user at this time for the distribution warehouse?
We do not. Typically, these are planned, you got to get a little bit further along in the planning process because they, they want to see that you've got traction before they're willing to commit. There's, the demand is such that they don't want to hope to get something. They got to know they can get to, get in there and get in there at a certain timeframe. So we, we don't have anybody identified. We certainly talked to a few. But we've said that we got to get a little bit further along in the process so that we can commit to your build date.
And can you also address working with the EAC as to renewable energy and solar capabilities?
Absolutely. The EAC was review letter is strongly recommending that we take a look at the possibility of renewables on the site to help with their Euclid 100 plan, you know, trying to, right? I don't know if it's Euclid, but it's, the county is trying to be 100% renewable. Given the rooftops here, we have gone through with other projects, namely the Expo Center. We're in a pilot project right now to build a 500,000-watt facility on the Expo Center, which we could take up to 2 million watt. With these rooftops, what we're going to do is, when we pick an architect for the buildings, we intend to make sure that they design the structures so that we can manage and maintain the roof loads that are required for solar installation. Again, we're, we're involved in many ways in renewables. We have two, you know, three-megawatt windmills that produce electric. Now, they're in New York and in Pennsylvania. They're not as friendly, but we've gotten contacted by many solar companies who want to do solar installations on, on the ground. And I think there's no better place than putting them on the building where you could use them. And so we really are excited about that opportunity. Pennsylvania just needs to do a few things. My understanding is they're working on them, but it's not there yet. When it does cross that threshold, we'll be the first ones to line up for solar opportunities on these roofs.
And John, one of the considerations in the conditional use ordinance is whether the proposed use will constitute appropriate use in the area and will not injure detract. will constitute appropriate use in the area and will not injure detract from the use of surrounding properties or from the character of their neighborhood. Can you explain how the applicant will address this?
Yes, I feel that we will, we will definitely, it's a permitted use. We're definitely in an area which has no residences that border the property, not one. And it's an area that is business-friendly. And I feel that this use is, to see an office building there would be very difficult today, you know, with the way we're working these days. Office is certainly not, not the favored real estate type. There's a one-story office building adjacent to the, across the street from Chesterbrook that is, there's an awful lot of vacancy in there. And now the self-storage, that's pretty jammed. But the office is pretty, pretty lean right now. And I think learning this new language with digital technology, with the remote working, we're not convinced that that will come back. However, we all need goods, and trucking is the fabric of our nation. If you think about it, it's, it's how we get all our goods, using trucks. And this site is, couldn't be better positioned for that use, and is consistent with the permission, permitted uses in the PIC. And I think we just want to put a lot of dressing and Christmas bows on it to make it look really good in the neighborhood. And probably the thing that comes up, and having talked to J.W. Pepper, is the, is the trucks. And I think Eric will do a good job explaining what that looks like, what those numbers look like, how that actually will play into this site, and how we'll try to mitigate any significant impact on those neighbors that we have there on Sherry Boulevard.
And the applicant has sufficient land to be able to provide effective screening on the property?
Absolutely. We have 70 feet on our property that we can do to protect the Chesterbrook, 70 feet. We can do fences, berms, walls, sound walls, landscaping. We can completely protect their, their interests there. As far as the neighbor directly across the street, we certainly can, we have about 130 feet, I'll call it 100. Again, you can do a lot of protection in 100 feet. If they don't want to see anything, at least at ground level, that's pretty easy to do. You know, we can, we're certainly willing to sit with them, have designers work with them, do a first-class job to try to minimize the impacts there.
And you'll do that as part of the land development process, work with both the neighbors and the township?
Absolutely.
And John, before I ask some of my final questions, I didn't want to let go by the bicycle issue that had come up at the planning commission, because you had wanted to address that.
Yeah, I do, I do. I think it's important, you know, some of the residents in the area, while it's not a very residential area that we're talking about, they have a high level of interest in bicycles. And now that we add a park to it, I think it even enhances their desires. And so as part of the process, part of the land development process, we fully intend to provide a safe bicycle access through Sherry Boulevard and to the park as part of our development program. We will, again, we can work with them, the township, or those groups that have interest in making sure there's a safe bicycle thoroughfare through Sherry Boulevard.
And one of the other things I wanted to ask you about was, you had previously testified in reference to, I believe, the, and I'm not sure if you did or you didn't, but the workerships that would occur at the distribution facilities.
Yeah, so, you know, every tenant is different. I couldn't say for certainty that everyone will be 24/7, but these guys, the trucking community doesn't like to be on the road during peak hours. That's, that's a big negative to their capacity to move goods. So they're 4:00 AM starts, and they like to be on the dock, you know, while everybody else is getting to work. So that the workers that come in here, they, you know, get into their, into their, inside the building and start, you know, sorting and getting the goods distributed through the various truck docks that exist on the property. So essentially, they are, they try to work outside that typical workday, peak hour trips, where Vanguard had somewhere around 5,000 car trips. You know, we're talking 380 total trips and truck trips of in the 70s. I mean, it's, it's very small compared to what Vanguard was going to do here, in terms of traffic impact.
And as part of the conditional use application that we had filed, we had provided the Aqua Water Availability Letter, which is marked as exhibit tab 5, and the Sewer Capacity Agreement marked as exhibit tab 6. And can you explain just briefly what those state?
Sure. Basically, there's plenty of sewer capacity. Vanguard had reserved 98,000 gallons a day in the Eagleview Sewer Treatment Plant, and they've been paying for that capacity since, I don't know, for 15 years probably. And they also had a commitment from the DARA Treatment Plant for 22,000 gallons. So there's actually way more sewer than we need. But for the, for the uses that we're doing, we're expecting 1,500 employees. They were looking at somewhere in the magnitude of 10,000 or 12,000 employees. I know their initial 2,000 plan had 12,000 cars of parking and about 2.4 million square feet on this site. So it was a much greater scale of employees on that site than what we're proposing.
And on one of the conditional use criteria, is it referenced to the environmental issues on the site? And can you just address that?
Yeah, you know, we obviously looked, it's confidential. We have a confidentiality agreement with Vanguard, so we have to be very careful about what we disclose without their permission. I did show them our plans for the site, and they were satisfied that what we were going to do there worked for them. We're not, we have no concerns about the environmental on the property whatsoever. And, you know, certainly through the land development process, we'll be happy to share all that. I just need to get permission to do that.
And in the beginning, as we indicated, we were asking pursuant to Section 806.4 L, the applicant is requesting extension of time to complete construction of the proposed distribution warehouse facilities. Can you give a timeline or phasing of how that will be done?
Yeah, so typically, what I've seen in this particular size building is that they would build probably one building, possibly Building A first as a spec building, if there's not a tenant in hand. Obviously, if there's a tenant in hand, you know, my order could be off. But then you would go to the second building and third buildings as a tenant arrives. You know, to say that 12 months it can be done, it's, it's just not feasible. So I would be asking if it'd be possible to extend the approval timeline to 10 years if possible. I know Vanguard at 15, but there's a little, little bit of bigger project. I'd like to request a 10-year approval extension if possible.
That's all the questions I had of Mr. Nielsen.
Thank you. Mr. Buck?
Let me get unmuted here. Just a few questions. Good evening, Mr. Nielsen.
Hi, Smuck.
So you were talking about before, so your company has developed, or your company right now manages, what, roughly 5 million square feet of industrial use?
That's correct.
And is that, did your company develop that, purchase it?
We have done mostly purchases of industrial property redevelopment. And I have to tell you, redevelopment is a lot more difficult than starting from a ground-up set of plans. It's easy to design and build. We built, you know, Shenondales, millions of feet of space ground up. So we definitely have experienced construction for 50-plus years. And that's the easy part. The redevelopment gets tough. You come in with a lot of different objections when you're trying to redevelop.
Right, and so how much ground-up industrial development has your company done, roughly?
You mean, brand-new? We have not built a building this size ground up yet. We've redeveloped 2 million footers. One's a million-two, and the other one's a million, one in Ratty and one in Oaks.
Okay. And on the drawings that were up, Tara, can you pull up the renderings that Mr. Nielsen was referring to?
Which ones?
One, I think, one or two before that one. No, it was the landscape views of the, oh yeah, that, yeah. So Mr. Nielsen told, where is that? You said that's the big building, the initial?
Well, no, no, no. This isn't our site. This isn't our site at all. This is a site that was developed up in Northampton. This was only shown for the wall, to show the wall, because we will have a wall on Route 100 side of the Building A.
Okay, and Building A will be relatively close to the Route 100.
It's about the same distance that Vanguard's building was. We checked that. Somebody asked that question previously, and we answered that. It was about the same distance.
Okay. Has any thought been given to the, Tara, if you could pull up the generally, general conditional use plan that shows the, over, thank you. Has thought been given, obviously, the, the significant concern from the neighbor's point of view? And just everybody's, the people are not opposed to development here. Everybody knows that something's going to go in there. What they just want to see is, is good and smart development that uses the infrastructure that's there wisely. Has, you know, and Sherry Boulevard essentially ends up being the access drive for the entire million-nine square feet of building. And the traffic study, which we can get into in a little bit with your traffic engineer, seems to say that the direct connection to the turnpike is not, is preferred but not necessary. Do you agree with that? Or do you think that access is a necessary part of a plan of this scope and size?
I certainly feel, I think we did the, I think, I'm certain that we did the study so as if we're unable to get it, that the traffic still works. From my perspective, working with the customer, who's what's really important here, the people that, and the truckers that have to use this site, to be able to use that access, to not have to wind through the site again, would be a huge advantage. So I will give it everything I have to try to get that done through PennDOT, through the turnpike. I think it makes so much sense. It's so logical, and it takes traffic off Sherry Boulevard, which, again, Vanguard was going to have thousands of cars on that. We're talking in the hundreds of trucks, not thousands.
Right, right. Well, it's still, the numbers in the, in the traffic study, depending on what type of warehouse it is, are in the 340 peak hour range.
That includes both cars and trucks. Most, only 20% of that number is car, is trucks. That's total vehicle trips. So we're only talking maybe 70 now. And actually, Eric is much better to answer those questions.
Yeah.
So the 340 number, you know, you could, if you thought it was trucks, that, that's just not the case. And Eric can help clarify that as well. I think that's a really important point for, for your clients to understand, just the volume of trucks there. I think, he told me, I think there was four trucks or something, they're expected to go out onto Euclid Avenue. Something very small. But he'd be better off to answer that question.
Okay, what, what do you, four trucks per what?
I think peak hour trips, four. I don't want to, I want to make sure that he, he answers these questions, not myself. I had listened to all that, because I thought it was important. As, you know, I want to understand the neighborhood, and I want to make sure we're listening to the neighborhood.
Understood, that's fine, no, understood. And we can get into this with Eric as well. But has consideration been given to moving the mid-size warehouse building to the west so that it's closer to the arterial road of Route 100, and the park is sort of in the middle, and the park is not on a busy highway?
Yeah, the challenge with that is the historical structures. So again, trying to balance, those historical structures need to remain. And there's also environmental constraints as you continue to shift to the west. So it would be difficult to move that building down because of that.
What are the historical structures? There's a couple all the way to the northwest. What are the historical structures that need to be preserved? Are you talking the farmhouse?
The farmhouse and the barn, yep. They're, they're actually right in the center of Building B. That, those ones in the center, those are the ones that need to be preserved. And the house, the house, the main house is right, right there. So that was the challenge. And then if you squeeze it too tight, you know, to me, you take away from the park. And that's why we were, that's why the building is where it is.
Okay. And then the access points on Sherry, and obviously, everybody can see, everybody knows what Sherry looks like and how it's designed, and the movements on that road. Has consideration been given to having the primary access point come out on 100?
The exit, as we talked about earlier, yes. The entrance, I guess we could certainly look at that. And as I, I'm not closed-minded about if there's a better option. I'm certainly willing to look at that. If that's something that makes good traffic planning sense for the community at large, I have no problem with looking at that option. I think we can direct most of the truck traffic in at the first entrance through signage and get them into the site to serve the two larger buildings. Now, the 150,000-foot building in the back, I think you're, that building that she pointed out, I thought was around a, I don't know, maybe 100,000. But the one all the way to the right, my thoughts there is you probably would, some of the trucks would probably go up to the, to that location as opposed to the first location. But through signage, I think a lot of the truck traffic could, could turn right there and not even get to your property. Which, you know, obviously is a benefit now. You know, Eric, again, can speak on that. And if we're successful in getting that turnpike entrance, I think we really cut the load down.
Mr. Buck, just out of curiosity about how much more do you think you have?
Just a couple minutes.
Okay, then we'll, after, after you're finished up, we'll, we'll take a short break and then come back and.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. Yeah, and actually, this is more traffic-related, but I know there's messages coming in. What has, and we didn't see any reference to this in the traffic study, and if this is more appropriate for Eric, that's fine. But, you know, everybody in the area thinks it's pretty much a foregone conclusion that a lot of the trucks, instead of going through there, will end up going down to 100 to 113 and back up into Sherry that way. Has, was that taken into consideration in the traffic study at all, the movements down?
You know, I best not answer that, because I just don't know that I can answer it with certainty. So why don't we let Eric answer that question? They did the overall traffic study, and best he answer that.
That's fine, okay. No, no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Nielsen.
Sure.
Thanks. Why don't we take a, take a, I would normally say a 10-minute break, but we're getting, let's take a 10-minute break, give everyone a chance, give the court reporter a chance to catch their breath, and then we'll come back with the board to ask some questions, and then we can redirect.
Sounds good, thanks.
But we'll start, we'll be back at, well, let's say, let's say 9:55. Everybody back? How's our court reporter doing?
I'm hanging in there, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, okay, back on the record. Does the board have any questions?
I did, um, this is Kim. I did, what, what is the distance between Building A and Route 100? I know that Mr. Nielsen said same distance as Vanguard, but I wasn't here when that original plan was proposed. So what is?
About a football field, about 330 feet.
Thank you.
About a football field.
And I know you said you're, you stated the warehouse would be built in terms of square feet. Can, do you, but you don't have clients yet. Do you space, do you partition out the warehouse based on your, I guess, business agreement with the clients? Or do you have set, I guess I'm asking, will three companies go in? Will 10 companies, clients go in? Like, how do you decide and how do you know? Like?
That's a good question, yeah. Typically, Building A, there are users that want a bigger footprint and they may take the whole building. But in many cases, especially in our redevelopment portfolio, we've done a lot of multi-tenant buildings. So could there be three tenants here? Yes, my suspicion is Building A will not be more than one tenant. If, if you asked me today, my best professional opinion would be there would be one tenant.
You said that you expect 1,640 workers there. How did you get that estimate?
We used Dave Babbitt, who's our consultant, to study what they use in other uses like this. And that's how he derived that number.
Is there an algorithm or formula you can offer?
I, I think Dave Babbitt would be, that he did the fiscal impact analysis and he would be able to tell you how he derived that number. It's, it's sort of laid out in the fiscal impact analysis.
So then we're talking about anywhere from 70 to 100 trucks a day plus 1,640 workers a day?
That was peak hour, but I think, I think he may be on next to answer your questions about trucks coming in and out of the site. The workers are typically, would, there would be multiple shifts, not just one shift.
And this is a 24 hour operation of the facility?
In most cases, they are. Sometimes they do reduce the number of workers overnight. But yes, it would be anticipated that it would be used 24 hours.
Thank you.
I'll say for the Building A and B, not going to say that for Building C, it's hard to say. But the, definitely the A and B building, chances are that will be a 24 hour.
Is there another facility along Route 100 or the turnpike that would be similar to this that could give us an idea of how that would operate?
There's definitely a number of examples of these types of buildings. Route 100, the only one I can think of would be all the way up near Route 78. There's a lot of them up there. It's hard to get the ground to do this type of use along a major arterial. So an example really close, I'd have to do some thinking, but up on 78. And the challenge there, they're all over the place. So you, you kind of want to go on to an area where there's, like you, like this is where it's just one group of buildings as opposed to many millions of feet.
All right, thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Dunn?
No, I'm finished, thank you.
Mr. Miller, Ms. Bowman?
So, Ms. Bowman, do you want to go first? I thought I heard you. I was going to ask about, and maybe this is, maybe this is for the traffic, traffic part of this. But you, you were talking about the bicyclist going down Cherie Boulevard and, but, and I appreciate that you're trying to make the ride down to Cherie Boulevard and into the, into the proposed park would be much, much safer, or at least as safe as it is now. What I'm actually concerned about is I going a little further down and crossing over 100 when you're increasing the amount of traffic, including truck, truck traffic. And if we had to make any, if there's any modifications that need to be made to that intersection, it's already very, I cross that section somewhat regularly. I know, on foot, I know that it's already a tricky intersection. And can you, and I know some of this can be handled in land development, but I do want to know what you're thinking in terms of, of how, how that particular aspect of the, of the route would be, would be taken care of.
Yeah, I think Eric is certainly better to answer the, the cycle timing and the various things that, that allow that to happen, that crossing. But I think in time, with other development ground that we have in the area, what I'd like to see is a blend of a, potentially even a pedestrian bridge across. But I, I wouldn't want to commit it for this project. But as we look to future projects there, it's possible that it may make sense to do that. And it may make sense to make a contribution towards that. Even now with, with, with what we're doing, we viewed our contribution now as the park and really developing a first class, a passive environment park.
Yeah.
But absolutely, as we look further down the road, possibly modal funds where we would be the contributor of the 30% to come up with some way to, to make a safe crossing when it's warranted. Like I said, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure when that is, but certainly we're willing to, we're willing to listen.
Right, because of course, that's part of the, you know, we've, we've invested resources in the, in the Euclid Trail Project. I would hate for that to build a park there and actually break the, the access to that area on, on foot and, and require it to be a, almost have to drive to that park because of that, that crossing right there, which is already, like I said, already difficult. Go ahead, Mimi, if you want to, I might have another question too.
Well, you had mentioned, John, that you would want an extended construction timeline and build-in phases. Where do you see the park development in that construction timeline?
So my thoughts are when we build the first warehouse building, that we would begin construction on either all or a portion of the park would be my thoughts. That would be done as part of our initial improvements there. Get that up and running.
And I had another question about, you had mentioned that you would work with the EAC as far as helping the township reach our goals, are ready for 100 resolution to reduce our carbon footprint by, you know, having at least the warehouses be solar ready? If that works out fiscally? Have you, would you work with the EAC and the Township Administration to do other kinds of things that would help reduce the carbon footprint of this project?
Sure, I'll be glad when it's electric semi-trailers coming in there. You know, Amazon has a big goal of going electric, I think by 2040. So, yeah, absolutely.
So, so like, there would be infrastructure, if, if there were, if we were to go to electric fleets and you could put the charging infrastructure for the trucks in there, okay. My other concern was noise pollution. How, how do you plan to address whatever truck noise pollution might?
So, until we get to electric semis, yeah. The newer trucks are far less, these aren't the 1970 Max running down the road with the, you know, smoke pouring out of them. These are, you know, much more refined vehicles and they're a lot less noisy, the newer ones compared to the older ones. We are, through the land development process, we'll go through that and make sure that the township understands completely what, what that looks like and, and what the impacts are. What I do know is the turnpike is very noisy already. It's very loud and actually near Route 100 and the turnpike is also another quite noisy area. So, you know, figuring out how we fit in is an important part of this. Couldn't, could involve some sound walls and some things to help certainly the neighbors to the rear there, J.W. Pepper and so on.
What would your hours be for the park for public use?
And I would say to you, that really boils down to what we as a group, meaning us, the township and all the agencies that are involved in that decide makes the most sense. You know, what are, how do we program it? So open space is fine, but really what you need is the program, when you can use it, what you can do, what events you hold there. I think that's a joint effort. I think we need to come together on that and get some good minds together and balance everybody's desires and needs to get the best product.
I had a quick question. I know that the, in the previously approved plan, Vanguard had pledged a contribution to emergency services. Would you be willing to match that?
I'll tell you what I'd like to do with that. I'd like, again, I viewed the park as kind of the initial donation. I'm not against a emergency services donation. What I'd like to do is kind of find out what the, what the full gamut of what the township has interest in and then find out where maybe through this development and the next development and so on, what we can do to help meet the goals of the township. So not sidestepping the question, but saying we have more development to do here. I'd like to focus on the park to start with. And then as I do more, certainly try to get our way up to both with, whether it's a pedestrian budget donation, emergency services donation, but basically work through as these other developments come up, a, a method to get to where you want to get to, which, and I'm familiar with the number two, a million dollars.
I'm sure Mimi would have reminded you, so. So I have a question and maybe this is for later, but for lighting on the, on the, on, for the parking area and so forth. You know, this is a pretty large area, it's not going to be lit, not lit before. You know, there's light pollution that affects, but just, you know, people's ability to see the sky as well as, you know, nature and so forth. So, you know, I saw our lighting consultant suggested using 3000K. You know, do you have any objection to that? And also the timing, if this is all, is there any way, is this going to be all, all night long it'll be on? Or is this going to be timed in any way? Things like that, I would like to, to have considered that we don't have light pollution throughout the night if it's not necessary.
I know there's been significant advancement in lighting technology with LED fixtures, dark sky fixtures, you know, the length of the poles. I'm not a lighting expert, but I assure you that we, along with your consultant, will work through the best lighting opportunity there that minimizes exactly what you're talking about. The light pollution. And you have what I would call significant ordinance requirements to, to meet as well. So, you're ahead of the curve on what, what you like to see there, and certainly with these new advancements, I think it gives us an opportunity to get where you want to get.
I have questions about the traffic that I'll hold.
Okay.
Other than that, I'm done.
Okay, for the board? Ms. Kearney, do you have any redirect?
Yes. Actually, I think, John, you could answer that one question in reference to the distance from warehouse A to the edge of the building. So that was my only question. I think you could answer that.
335, to be exact. 335 feet.
Okay, and based on that, Mr. Buck, I'm assuming no recross?
Correct. Thank you.
Ms. Kearney, do you want to, how do you want to do your exhibits? You want to do them now per witness?
Actually, can I, can I make one suggestion, please? Obviously, from our perspective, the main thing here that concerns people is the access points and the truck traffic and the use of Shreve Boulevard and Route 100. We are engaging a traffic consultant to look at this with the idea of if there are other good ideas to make this work better, we'd like to present them to Audubon and to the township to try to make sure that this is done in the most beneficial way for everybody. And if that's the case, I, given that we're likely not to get through all of Ms. Kearney's, all the applicants' witnesses tonight, might make sense to hold off on the traffic one till next time and maybe go with the other ones tonight.
Ms. Kearney?
You're muted.
I'm sorry. I'm happy to do that. Our engineer was going to go next. I thought you may want to hear from our traffic engineer prior, because I'm not sure how late we'll go tonight, but if, we could certainly do that. We could hold off on Eric Ossip, DP and D, if you want to wait on that.
I just think, yeah, I think that might make sense that, so we have a chance to have somebody take a look at the plans and the McMahon review letter and those things and then have it all done in one night. Just a thought. Maybe do the engineer first.
Bill had wanted to ask, the supervisor, Bill wanted to ask some questions to the traffic. How does, I don't know how that plays into this, but I just was curious.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a preference.
Okay.
And I'll guess my press, I'll get my questions answered either way.
And truthfully, I think we're probably not going to go past 10:30 tonight anyway.
Okay.
I think we're, we're, and, and so let's do this. Do you want to, Ms. Kearney, do you want to do your exhibits now? Or do you want to wait till you're done with your whole case and then we'll just do them all at one time?
Let's do them all at one time.
Okay, that's fine. And then we can certainly start the next witness. You know, if it's going to be an expert, we can get through voir dire and do all that and, and, you know, we can start some of the introductory stuff, see how far we get, but I, I think, I think it's probably a fair bet we're not getting through all the witnesses tonight, so. But then we probably should. You, me, and Mr. Buck should probably talk and then I can talk to the board and staff about when we should do the next hearing. Maybe we should potentially talk about a separate night from, you know, separate and apart from a regular board meeting to, to move this along. I've, I have a feeling this may take a few nights. So, we can work on that. We can work on scheduling.
Okay. The next witness I had was the engineer Kestra Kelly. I don't know if I saw her on here. Oh, there she is. Yes. And Kestra CB is listed as at exhibit tab 18. I don't know if we could bring that up. And Kestra, can you dispel your first and last name for the court reporter? It is shown on your Zoom picture.
Sure. First name's Kestra, K-E-S-T-R-A. Last name is Kelly, K-E-L-L-Y.
And? Let me swear her in.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
Kelly, raise your right hand to be, or Ms. Kelly, raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Kestra, by whom are you employed?
BL Companies. B as in Boy, L as in Long.
And can you briefly, can you briefly describe what you do for your employer?
I'm a project manager in the site civil group focusing primarily on land development.
And can you give the board a brief description of your educational background and employment history?
Sure. I have a BS in civil engineering from Virginia Tech. I'm a registered professional engineer. I've worked in the civil engineering field mainly on land development for the last 20 years.
And I think we're looking at, can you just give some representative types of projects that you've worked on in the past few years focusing on Pennsylvania?
Sure. I mean, I've worked on multi-millions of square feet of industrial warehouse distribution developments for national developers within Pennsylvania and also nationwide. I think that the, my resume speaks for itself in terms of my experience. I have experience with land development for both industrial warehouse developments, multifamily, residential, and commercial.
And have you previously testified before municipal bodies in Pennsylvania?
Yes, I have.
And can you just name a few for the board?
Most recently, the zoning hearing board for Hilltown Township and the zoning hearing board at West Donegal Township.
And have you previously been accepted as an expert witness before the, before boards in Pennsylvania?
Yes.
And what type of expert witness?
In land development.
And I'd like to offer Kestra Kelly as an expert in land development as an engineer, civil engineer, and is with a specialty in land development.
Okay, Mr. Buck, do you have any questions?
No, no objection to that.
Okay. Does the board have any questions?
No, she sounds like an expert.
I, I will accept Ms. Kelly as an expert in civil engineering with a specialty in land development.
Thank you. Hey, Kestra, you've been retained by the applicant for the purposes of the development of the properties that we were looking at on the conditional use plan?
Yes, I have.
And there are four properties that make up the 169 acres. That's the subject of the conditional use application?
Correct.
And the intent is for the four properties to be consolidated?
Correct.
And I actually said the size, what's the size of the board? For consolidated?
169 acres.
And Tara, if you could go back to the conditional use plan, I think, as, yes, thank you. And can you just generally describe the subject properties?
Sure. The existing site, approximately a quarter of the site slopes to the north and drains to an unnamed tributary of Pickering Creek. The remainder of the site slopes to the south and drains toward Shumona Creek. Both of these drainage watersheds have streams and associated wetlands and buffers. There's no FEMA mapped floodplains on the site. The site is primarily agricultural currently with obviously some historical structures, and there are some trees.
And the zoning, can you describe the zoning classification of the properties?
The site is currently zone PIC, planned industrial-commercial.
And can you briefly describe, as Mr. Nielsen has, has already described, the surrounding uses of properties?
Sure. I would agree with Mr. Nielsen's testimony. The site is surrounded by zones that are all commercial-industrial in nature, PCID, PIC, PC, PC2, PI. The site is not adjacent to any residential zoning districts.
And in our conditional use letter that we filed with the township, we had indicated, as you can see on the plan, the distribution warehouse A, E, and C, and the sizes are noted on the plan as well as the parking. Correct?
Correct.
And initially, we had indicated that warehouse A would likely be 50 feet, warehouse B 50 feet, and warehouse C 40 feet, correct?
Correct. That is our, that's what we put on the plan, and my understanding is that it's subject to change between the 35 feet and the 65 feet.
And the distribution warehouse is a use permitted by right in the PIC district?
Correct.
And also the offices when the, within the distribution warehouses are a use permitted by right?
Correct.
And we meet the zoning requirements such as for a lot area and setbacks. We're not asking for any relief in relation to that.
Correct.
We had provided the township with a plan that shows, we had provided the township with a sketch plan that shows compliance with the requirements of Section 601.3 as to the erection of more than one principal structure on a lot. And you have to meet a lot area yard and other requirements of the ordinance as though these were each distribution warehouse was on an individual lot. And we have provided that plan, correct?
We have provided that plan, and that plan shows that we meet all those requirements.
And did you review the PIC ordinance? And is the proposed use in compliance with the purpose for large-site industrial development to meet the current and future township, regional, and community needs?
Yes, I believe so, in my professional opinion. Again, warehousing and distribution are approved uses within the zone. This site is optimally located, since there are no residential zones adjacent to it. The site has significant access to major highways, again pointing to one of the reasons why it was zoned PIC. I think that this proposed development serves the public need to support the increased demand in commercial and industrial warehousing, which has grown exponentially, and it's, it's expected to continue to grow. I think that we've worked with the applicant to develop a plan that honors the existing environmental features on site and truly limits any impacts to a maximum extent feasible. The applicants agreed to work with and maintain the historical structures on the site. And the applicant, as discussed, is willing to work with the township to, to provide a public park. I've worked with many, many developers over my years, and this applicant really is, stands out as being open to wanting to work with the township, being good neighbors. I think everything that you've heard today proves that. You know, one of the things that had already been incorporated in the plan was locating the buildings where we did, which was not right up against the setbacks. It gave additional space to providing buffering and screening, a softening of the development.
And as indicated at the beginning of the hearing, we're asking for conditional use approval for structures over 20AF stories of 35 feet in height up to 65 feet in height, and for the non-residential structures that contain more than 40,000 or have a total combined parking space count of over 200. Those are, those are the two that we're focusing on with your testimony, correct?
Correct.
And there's no specific end user identified for these three warehouse distribution facilities, as Mr. Nielsen had indicated, so the heights could change.
Right, and you know, my experience, that's typical with a project at this stage is to not have an end user.
And due to the, as part of the zoning ordinance, it indicates that if you have certain heights, the impervious and building coverage have to be adjusted as you go higher. Can you explain to the board how the applicant will be able to meet that?
Sure. We fully intend to comply with the code. We have provided to the township an exhibit to show how the current concept sketch plan meets that. We took a similar approach as Vanguard did. We basically did a weighted average in terms of the building height. So we went around the perimeter, figured out percentage-wise how much of each building is a certain height. And then based on that, we were able to get a weighted average building height for all three buildings combined. Any, there is a penalty in terms of percentages of impervious cover. You get over 35 feet. So we've applied that formula to the current concept plan, and we have adjusted the impervious cover, and the current plan is underneath, is below that coverage. So that would be the same approach that we would use if something had to be adjusted in terms of building heights. This is a large site, and it does give us flexibility to a degree, keeping in mind all the site constraints, but we do have the ability to reduce impervious if we needed to go higher. We have their, that flexibility.
And as Mr. Nielsen indicated, the buildings are required and will all be sprinkled according to the, to the provisions of the Euclid Township Code, fire code?
Correct. The buildings are going to meet all of the International Building Code standards, including Euclid Township standards.
And the fire marshal had sent a review letter that indicated certain items had to be done, such as properly identifying the building, installing knock boxes, providing water main layouts and fire hydrant layouts, and that would, would the applicant comply with those and when would that be done?
Yes, the applicant would comply with those, and that would be done through the land development process. And all of those are typical requirements for facilities such as this.
And the landscaping and screening will be designed as part of land development also?
That's correct.
And, and again, as the fire marshal indicated, it will not be designed so as to impede fire department access?
Correct.
And any fenced-in truck or trailer parking areas will be designed to have fire department access also?
That is correct.
And is there sufficient land area available to be able to effectively screen the proposed development from adjoining, the adjoining uses from adverse impacts, if any?
Yes, as I mentioned previously, you know, not only do we have the setbacks that are required by the code, but we go above and beyond that to provide additional area to give us flexibility during land development to implement various different measures such as birmingham, landscaping, fences, walls, to screen and soften the view scopes.
And the lighting plan was submitted as part of our conditional use application, and it's exhibit tab eight to the exhibit booklet, and we've received a review letter on that, correct?
That is correct.
And will the applicant work with the township recommendations for lighting as part of the land development process?
Yes.
And in your opinion, will the lighting have an adverse impact on the neighboring properties?
No. That's based on, you know, the, the lighting plan we submitted during for this conditional use is obviously, again, preliminary in nature as we're still refining the site as you would expect prior to going through land development. But even at that point, you know, all the lighting levels at the property line were zero to 0.1 foot candles, which is in conformance with the township code.
And the property will be served by public water and public sewer?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Nielsen's testimony in the fact that the, we've got Aqua Will Serve letter and sufficient sewer capacity.
And the Aqua Will Serve is exhibit tab five, and the sewer capacity is exhibit tab six. And the solid waste disposal, how will that be handled?
That will all be designed and planned for during land development. In terms of where dumpster locations will be, how access will be obtained, as well as how screening will occur.
And do you see any issues with being able to effectively do that as part of the land development?
I don't anticipate any issues with that. Again, these are very. Standard buildings for this type of development and so the, we, we know how to design for these items.
And in your professional opinion, is the size, scope, extent and character of the conditional uses for height? And the 40,000 plus and more than 200 parking spaces consistent with the spirit, purpose and intent of the PIC ordinance?
It is. Again, you know, warehousing and distribution are both approved uses with this in the zone. And you know, this plan is consistent with, again, warehouse distribution developments. It has the scale, size and scope. To respond to the demands of the market's needs.
And in your professional opinion, will the proposed conditional uses for height and the over 40,000 square feet and more than 200 parking spaces. Cause negative impacts of a type or degree not usually associated with a distribution warehouse?
No, it will not.
And in your professional opinion, will the proposed development constitute an appropriate use in the area and not injure or detract from the use of surrounding properties? Or from the character of the neighborhood?
Correct.
And as Mr. Nielsen had indicated, the applicant was. Willing to work with the neighbors, specifically the pepper and the daycare in reference to providing landscaping?
Correct.
I think that's all the questions I had for Kestra.
Okay. Mr. Buck, about how much do you believe you have?
We have no questions for Ms. Kelly. We're fine.
Okay. How about the board? Does the board have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I did. Kim here. I think I, I need some clarification on some numbers. So if there are six, 1,640 workers. Did, was the question referring to 200 parking spaces or 200 plus parking spaces? Cause I'm thinking even if you had two workers per car, you would need. And then you had two shifts, you would need 400 spaces.
I thought you need conditional use because we have more than 200 parking spaces.
Yes. Way the ordinance reads, if you have a non, a non-residential building, 40,000 square feet, or you have more than 200 parking spaces, you have to ask for a conditional use.
Do you have a specific number of parking spaces planned?
The current plan has 1,144 car parking spaces.
Thank you. I had another question and I don't know who can answer this. Given that there are lots of trucks coming and going and given that the average tow truck cannot tow a big. A big Mack truck, whatever they're called, the big 18 wheelers, do you know where the closest towing company? That is capable of towing a big truck, should it break down, where the. Closest tow truck company sits?
Have that. I know we could, we could find that out and get back to you.
Thank you.
That, is that all that's done?
Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Any, any other supervisor questions?
I don't have any questions.
All right, Ms. Carey, based on that, any redirect?
No.
All right, then, Ms. Kelly, thank you. And I think we'll probably end here for tonight and Ms. Kearney, Mr. Buck, maybe we can talk this week. And try and figure out. Plan for what, what works for everybody as far as proceeding with some more days, maybe we can get a few dates and I can circle back also with the board and staff about. Dates that they may be available.
Yes.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Well, thank everybody. I know it's, it's late. I know, you know, we didn't make it a marathon. So I guess that's a good thing, but. So we, we will reconvene. I'm sure once we have dates, it'll be posted up on the, on the township website.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. We look forward to working with you and working with the neighbors as we work our way through this process.
Night everyone.
Thank you.
I have a question. This is Lorraine, the court reporter. I just wanted to ask Ms. Kearney, who, who are you with? Did you say it was Hamburg, Ruben, Ruben Mullen, okay, in Lansdale?
Yes.
All right, I'm Mr. Buck.
I'm Stevens and Lee.
In Reading?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.